Okay, good evening. Yeah. So the Southbridge, it being seven P M., Town Council, Monday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty, at seven P M., this meeting is being held via remote participation. I will call this meeting to order. Read the following pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, order suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town council is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public. It will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. I reminded that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel one ninety-two or by the remote information, which was noted below in this agenda. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website at W W W dot C I dot Southbridge dot M A dot U S as soon as we are able. If you'd like to access this by phone, the phone number is one eight seven two two four zero three four one two, and the access code is five one three dash zero seven zero dash three zero nine. A roll call vote will be required for all votes taken under this order. And just, uh... So we're clear, anybody that's speaking and that is not a counselor would ask that you, uh, state your name and your role. Uh, please, uh, give me a second here. Okay, it seems, okay, there you go. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and justous.
Thank you, Councilman, I heard you, thank you. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Absent.
Counselor Manah.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
Thank you. Um, just, uh, for anybody that's watching this meeting who has called in, just to let you know this meeting is being recorded as well as on cable access, as well as the fact that every caller that's logged in is identified in our log of participants. I'll move on to, gonna bypass and consider and accept the town council minutes for Monday, April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty, as we realize that, uh, those minutes that were emailed at least to me and Councilman are of April sixteenth and not April twenty-seventh. Don't know if anybody else had the same issue, but we will, uh, bypass those and hold off to the next meeting. I've already made a note to make sure that we have both sets on our next meeting. Subcommittee reports, general government, I'll move to Counselor Steves, Counselor Steves.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we do not, we have not had a meeting recently, we don't have one scheduled.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, Counselor Nash.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, no meetings recently, nothing scheduled as yet, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Education and Human Services, that is Counsel Lazo, there is a meeting, we held a meeting last week with Bay Path, Counsel Daniel chaired that meeting, uh, and we have another meeting this week with the Southbridge Public Schools on the sixth, correct? Uh, Plan Development, Counsel Adams.
He was chaired through you, there has been no meeting, um, it's our last, uh, town council meeting, and there is none scheduled, thank you.
Thank you. Protections of persons and property.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you, um, there are no meetings scheduled, um, and there were some items, um, that came from the fire department that are, um, was decided to just bring up to full council, um, and vetted out here tonight, item sixteen, I mean, agenda item number sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and that's it, thank you.
Okay, just for the record, that was your decision to move it directly to council, correct?
Yes, it was, it just makes sense, I think, about it, and the past discussion that we did have on it, 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 it made a lot of sense, thank you.
Thank you. Special Committee Reports, Curbside Advisory, Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you, um, nothing new, of course, since our, since last week, uh, we do have a meeting tomorrow at three o'clock for the Curbside Advisory Committee, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Major of Search Committee, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you, uh, we're having a meeting scheduled for, uh, this Thursday at six P M., at which point we'll discuss, uh, policy statements, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. COVID-nineteen Public Health and Safety Briefing Update, I did not put individual participants on this, I know that, uh, I believe Andy's on this call, uh, possibly on this meeting, as well as Chief Norman, so if they have anything else to add, uh, I will call on them at that point. Just to update the council from last week's discussion and to update the town as well, again, the Emergency Operations Center has been up and running for at least eight weeks now. We are now into a one, uh, day a week briefing, which I chair that briefing on the Monday mornings at nine A M. Uh, multiple participants from, uh, the two chiefs who acted as the interim commanders, as well as Andy, Town Manager, Finance Department, E P W, the Deputy Chiefs of the Fire Department and Police Department, all participate in that, as well as the Director. Yeah, we're the Director. We have very good discussions every Monday morning as to where at in this pandemic, uh, and just as a matter of, uh, record, Arlington Memorial Hospital is part of our discussions in the morning, they discussed this morning, testing capacity as well as their capacity at the hospital, at this time they have plenty of capacity when it comes to their I C U, uh, and beds. They've been holding their own throughout this pandemic, I'd like to thank them on behalf of the council, uh, for their partnership with the town and all you assist, Arlington Hospital had, with a positive rate of approximately fifteen percent. I think if you look through the, uh, state, uh, dashboard, uh, that's pretty consistent, I think, throughout the state, I think the chiefs, uh, we can talk about that, and maybe Chief Norman can, or, uh, Andy can, uh, echo that or report on that. Uh, they have now reached twenty-one, schools have reported an astonishment that they have one thousand mails being delivered through the school feeding program. Uh, that is a lot of mails, uh, to a, a, uh, community that desperately, uh, is in need of making sure that we deliver that, so that's, uh, kudos to the school departments for putting that out. Um, Andy, you are on, so I, I'll let you talk a little bit about yours. Uh, the homeless shelter does continue to operate, um, I was on a call earlier today with the Y M C A, they are providing meals to that homeless shelter on a three nights a week basis, uh... I believe there's between eleven and sixteen residents in that, and, uh, they gave us sixteen residents in the Y M C A meeting, I think we've been talking that there's eleven, so they could include the house and maybe some staff members, but they're feeding about sixteen people. Um, earlier today, I'd like to thank the Police Chief and Fire Chief for putting out the, uh, Facebook, uh, live message that they've been using, uh, we've been using that as a platform to get information out, they talked about the... ...as order as to mask and how the town will proceed with that information. Chief Norman, do you have anything to add based on, go ahead, also, who was that, Counsel Steves?
Well, I was just commenting that you were frozen, and you keep, you keep, you keep freezing radically, so...
Mr. Chairman, if you will give me one second, if you want to reset your...
What's that?
Uh, you seem to be breaking up and then freezing every so often, we didn't, uh, a few words, so I'll do a quick update if you want to reset yourself. All right, so, so everybody, uh, good evening, uh, Chief Normandin here.
Yeah, go ahead.
In regards to the E O C, obviously, uh, Jack, uh, the chairman has, uh, gone through quite a few of the things, um, in regards to it, I just want to let you all know that, uh, the Center of Hope has opened up a, uh, adult facility for use for their clients of positive COVID-nineteen patients, uh, the capacity is five patients and three staff members, uh, all of the boards, uh, departments had worked together, together over the last week to get this up and running, um, at this point, uh, as of today, there are still no patients there, but obviously through the, uh, state system, they will possibly get, uh, COVID-nineteen patients there, uh, they are managing their own people at this point, uh, there are some, uh, planning, there is planning for EMS services to, to, to help them out if need be, uh, obviously, the homeless shelter is, uh, full to capacity right now at one forty-one Main Street, I stopped there on my, uh, my way out of the, out of the, uh, the building today, um, I was met by the, uh, physician that's in care of the building, I'll be honest with you, he was cleaning the, uh, the porta-potties outside, um, so, uh, Dr. Holland, uh, kudos to what he's been doing here, um, he's obviously trying to care for, uh, society that, uh, that, that doesn't have too much, but, uh, there, he's running full steam right now, fully, fully, uh, staffed, uh, fully, uh, uh, loaded at this point, uh, the whole town conference center is still, uh, reaching out to, uh, hospital and public safety, uh, people that are non-COVID, uh, patients, I mean, personnel to care for all the other personnel within town and the hospital, uh, that seems to be going very well, um, as, uh, as the chairman had mentioned in regards to our Facebook message today, um, we felt that it was important to push out two messages, um, the, uh, that's why we did one today instead of waiting till Thursday, uh, the Governor Baker's order for using masks at all times for residents, uh, state residents, town residents, whatever you may call it, uh, this is very important, uh, the mask general law does, uh, have an enforcement piece to it, that's, that was brought forth, um, at this point, uh, we're gonna try to do education for citizens that we see in these crowds, uh, that are within six feet of each other congregating in areas, uh, the police department and, uh, other personnel, the Board of Health and the Fire Department, if we see these things, we do have the ability to go to them and say, you need to disperse, um, and also make sure that they know, uh, and understand the regulations and the guidelines of wearing masks, uh, this is very important, so obviously, any, uh, retail stores that you arrive in, you should be wearing a mask, uh, we even discussed a little bit about voting coming up in June, uh, so at this point, uh, that piece has not been really discussed with the town clerk, but I think that's very important to know, uh, as we move forward throughout the, uh, the rest of the month, uh, masks will be required for town residents, uh, including the Fire Department, the Police Department, and counselors anywhere we go, I do know, uh, the manager may make some comments in regards to all, uh, town buildings, uh... People wear masks, that's gonna keep us all safe, uh, education is the key, is what, uh, Chief Woodson has brought up, so we're gonna try to educate as best we can, uh, repeat offenders, obviously, will get a little bit stronger, um, and there is a process where we can fine them up to three hundred dollars per, per offense, um, that, that is very important, that was the major message to push this out, so we started today being Monday, uh, Wednesday, this all takes effect, but education, again, I'm gonna keep going back to that as the key, and we'll continue to push that forward. The second part is, uh, unfortunate, um, in regards to that, is that, uh, we've been completely, both the Police and Fire Department have been completely overwhelmed, overwhelmed, I can't even imagine the, the amount of requests that we've received for birthday potties, younger children birthday potties, uh, anniversaries, um, it's come to the point where actually, because of call volume is increasing because of the good weather, um, we've missed a few of them, and I do know the Police Chief received, uh, I guess, a stern message from a resident saying, I can't believe you guys didn't make it, um, my son was expecting you guys to come by, uh, we, we don't want to be put in that position as the Police and Fire Chiefs, um, so at this point in time, as we move forward over the next couple of weeks, so possibly months, uh, we're not gonna be, uh, presenting, uh, or, uh, the fire trucks or the police, uh, police cars for these type of parades, uh, citizens understand this, i- it puts us in a tough spot to be doing this, um, I totally understand why you would be a little bit upset, but unfortunately, at this present time, you know, masks need to be worn, we need to stay, stay safe distances, um, a lot of these congregations of, uh, birthday parades and, and celebration parades, uh, we're not seeing that happen, so, uh, safety is the number one key in our reasoning for not doing that and trying to keep all the citizens safe, um, other than that, the, uh, the cases are reported on a daily basis through our E O C, please find those numbers and any additional information on the town's website, uh, we do our best to update everything every day, uh, Counsel Adams has been busy typing away at each of the E O C meetings, um, and we will be having a Facebook Live on Thursday to fill in the, any of the other updates that other town citizens or you guys need to know, so that's into my report, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Andy, did you have anything else you want to add to the COVID-nineteen report?
Um, not a whole lot, we, um, looking forward to a third round of monies to help fund the response to this thing, um, we have a situation at one of the buildings in Southbridge with the, uh, at the rehab center where, um, as we feared, we're gonna get one case there and it's gonna start to explode, we're trying to work with them, um, Paul and I are trying to work with them to get fully tested there, they have a couple of cases that, that are happening there, um, and we want to contain that before that one gets out of control. I had my first non-compliant isolation today, um, worked with the Police Department, Ron, and the, uh, couple of lawyers regarding how we can enforce it, and I just actually walked into my house about ten minutes before this meeting because I was working on that with the hospital, but I think we have that in control and, uh, working with Town Manager and a couple of attorneys, we're gonna use a regulation that I, twenty-five years I've never used before, but it's an isolation and quarantine regulation that we can use with a judge's signature to, to mandate, almost hold prisoner people who choose not to, not to, uh, isolate or quarantine, so, not bad, sixty-four cases and only one so far that we had to pull this on, so hopefully that will be the last one, um, like I said, twenty-five years I've never used it before, um, other than that, I think Jack pretty much, Chairman Jovan pretty much covered everything.
Okay, thank you, are there any questions anybody has of the Chief, Fire Chief, or, uh, Mr. Pelletier? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, thank you. And now move on to the chairman's announcements. A council has requested, uh, minutes of an executive session from March ninth and realized that that was right at the beginning of their pandemic, uh, situation, and we had not approved those, so we will be holding a, uh, executive session at our, uh, at a next meeting to review, uh, as per the guidelines that we have in open meeting law. Uh, last week we had a meeting with the Bay Path representatives, uh, it was very informative in regards to, had a lot of good dialogue, we got in the, uh, status of the funding for towns and schools, uh, and with that, uh, some concerns that, uh, I think I have, and I, I hopefully, uh, some of my fellow counselors do with the timing of the approval of the budget and how we may work through that, as you know, the charter states we have to adopt the budget by the end of May, uh, Bay Path Superintendent LaFlesh and, uh, Business Manager Yakabuchi both articulated pretty well that, um, most likely we won't have the numbers from the state, uh, updated numbers until possibly the end of May or beginning of June, so I'll have to think about some of our, uh, timelines as we move forward with that, um, upcoming budget meetings, uh, E H S Subcommittee is this week, uh, May eleventh, capital plan and free cash, uh, I've, uh, made that into a special town council meeting, uh, so that we can have, uh, full participation of counselors, uh, and that's mostly due to this remote participation, uh, issue. And talking to Yvonne, I had asked her, uh, if we had selected a date for a public hearing, as you know, our capital plan, uh, six-year capital plan, capital improvement plan, and budgets require a public hearing, uh, I was given a date, uh, that they originally wanted to do this on our May eighteenth meeting, but charter is very specific in providing that you have to give two weeks prior notice in a publication, we do that through Stonebridge Press, Stonebridge Press does not go out if we have to have the budgets, we're not even finalizing the budget cycle yet, uh, in order to accommodate this, I had to schedule some things around so that we could have adequate posts and not get into the position we did last year, um, so with that, I have scheduled the following date of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, for the F Y twenty-twenty-one budget public hearing to commence at six P M., the capital plan public hearing to commence at six forty-five P M., and then a special town council meeting at seven thirty P M. for the purposes of the adoption of the budget and capital plan, uh, so that's, uh, where we're at on that, to make sure that we're fully compliant with the provisions of the Southbridge charter. Earlier today, and I will pass this on to the Town Manager, I received a complaint about Ellis Road, I will forward that information to the Town Manager, we've had the conversations about Ellis Road, we all know that's a private way, but, uh, I'll pass that information on to the Town Manager. Finally, uh, this past week, last week, uh, counselors, uh, Adams as Chairman of the Plan and Development and Vice Chairman, Counselor John Daniels, Vice Chairman, uh, Town Manager and Representatives of the Economic Development Committee held a remote, uh, call with Chip Norton of Franklin Realty, uh, relative to Southbridge Innovation Center infrastructure projects, uh, this is relative to the master plan that they have down there, uh, and the possibility of Franklin Realty, uh, securing, uh, state and, uh, federal grants, I believe it's federal grants, but grants to, uh, do a major project down there, a couple million dollar project, which would, uh, require possibly some easements, uh, by the town of Southbridge. I originally had scheduled that meeting to be held also on March twenty-eighth, uh, this was prior to the issues with the, uh, budget hearings, so that meeting now will be held on June first at seven P M. So with that, uh, he will be getting us the information, I've asked that he get that information, originally it was gonna be to us by the fifteenth for us to have for the meeting for the twenty-eighth, it'll be now, uh, May twenty-second, he will get that information for us for the council so that they can review, uh, and his presentation to us so that we can vet this out, there'll be no vote on that night, it's really a presentation for him to discuss the project and what the, uh, different sides of, uh, the partnership would look like between the town and the, uh, Franklin Realty, but there would be no vote on that, this would just be a presentation on his behalf, uh, similar to the master plan that he's presented to us before. So with that, I have nothing further at this time under Town Council Chair announcements, and I'll move on to Town Manager's announcements, to Town Manager.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, as the Fire Chief said, I've issued a directive to all town facilities, specifically related as the Town Hall Library and Community Center, that all employees, if they leave their offices and walk through the building, are now, uh, required to wear masks, in, in the town buildings, it was just limited to the employees that were there, we're all keeping our six feet apart, but with the governor's announcement, pretty much wearing masks, uh, whenever you're near anybody, uh, we thought it prudent, uh, myself and, uh, Health Director Pelletier to make sure that employees wear masks even as they move around the building, uh, so I did talk to the Library Director and the Community Center about that, and we're all moving forward in that direction, uh, as you know, we're, the chairman has said we're still working on a budget, um, spent some time with our Finance Director talking about, uh, both the capital improvement budget and specifically the free cash distribution, and re-analyzing, uh, the recommendation, recommendations we'd already made, uh, we will be making new recommendations when we get to that evening, uh, in light of the potential revenue shortage, um, Melissa's been keeping, keeping track of those revenues and looking at them, we're waiting for a couple of large banks to come in and, uh, pay their escrow accounts, uh, so we're hoping within a week or so they have a better idea as to the revenues for, uh, this quarter, uh, but we, we are gonna be concerned that there's gonna be some losses, the question is really how much and how significant that loss is gonna be, uh, been spending a great deal of time, and I'll be talking even more with my department heads tomorrow about developing a plan for reopening town facilities, uh, it's actually very complicated, uh, I'll be meeting my department heads to review the plan I've developed to talk about changes and, and how we deal with buildings into the future, you know, I, I spent some time today at the Community Center, just wondering how we could reorganize that building to make it safer, uh, for seniors to go in that building in the future, very, very difficult, and the timing of when all this is gonna happen and, and what recommendations we get to the, from the state, uh, some directives is gonna be very, very important, I mean, you can imagine that the seniors are our most, uh, most, uh, they're the, the biggest chance of getting this virus and, and, uh, we can't do anything that's going to do anything to jeopardize them, so that facility, I think, is gonna be quite some time before we can get it open and running, uh, library is a little bit easier to work with, the, we can s- make the desks and tables separate and areas separate, so, uh, citizens can come in there, but again, you're limiting the amount of people into the building, there's a lot of questions about programs, uh, so we're looking at a whole host of different, uh, concepts, again, playgrounds, parks, when do they get reopened, um, do we have limits as to how, how many people can go into them, uh, town hall, tax collections, how do we keep people six feet apart, so I've got a kind of a, a, a lot of different variations or ideas in that plan, and looking forward to working with the department heads to, to continue building that, but some of the things we're really gonna need, some state direction as to, uh, what they're recommending going forward, um, you know, the, the world is definitely gonna be a different place, uh, and town facilities are gonna be in that where we're just gonna have to act differently, we're gonna have to have separation of all of our employees, and we're gonna have shields up at the countertops, so a lot of things are going on and, and we're getting ready, hoping that there's some kind of partial reopening to the state on the eighteenth, like the governor said, although I would say I wouldn't be overly surprised if he extends that date again, but, uh, from listening to the Lieutenant Governor in a C C M meeting, it seems that they are intent on doing some things on the eighteenth, even if they can't open everything to, to try to give, uh, loosen up on the restrictions to some degree, but, uh, as you know, it depends upon how the cases continue to go throughout the state, um, you know, looking at the numbers, it doesn't seem that we've totally peaked yet, we've kind of leveled off, but it, it's very difficult to say, still a lot of new cases, uh, so I think it, it's, it's gonna take some more time, um, but, but, you know, we can only look at it on a day-to-day basis as things happen and try to make decisions. Um, I think that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman, I, I will say this, um, it's been a real pleasure, uh, working with all the department heads as they analyze what's going on, I spent a great deal more time with Andy, uh, than I think I ever have in talking about these issues, um, as he said today, we had a very complex issue of a resident who, uh, you know, there, there may be, I'll put it this way, there may be residents out there who on top of being COVID-nineteen positive, may have mental health issues, and trying to get them to quarantine can be a very difficult thing indeed, uh, and obviously, we can't have somebody who's COVID-nineteen positive walking around, you know, getting other people sick, so we're trying to deal with those issues, and sometimes it involves lawyers and, and the police and judges and everything else, so it, it's complex, but I feel, uh, we have a great team of people and everybody's working together to deal with those kind of issues, and that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you, to the Town Manager, just a couple things, um, I listened to the, um, Lieutenant Governor and the Governor speak today, um, what I got from the Lieutenant Governor when she stepped up to the mic is, she said, we promised to have a plan in place by the eighteenth, nothing will be open, that's what I got out of that message, but maybe you know something that we don't know, it'd be nice to see a couple, um, restrictions eased up, but, um, the state court, will that be opening this summer? Have you heard about, um, that from the state?
No, to you, Mr. Chairman, we have not heard of anything for the state yet, uh, we're waiting for their order, uh, the C C M, Connecticut Council of Municipalities, has a weekly COVID-nineteen meeting in which the Lieutenant Governor's on and speaks, uh, about various issues, so, uh, she hasn't said absolutely that they're opening things on the eighteenth, but just the tone, the context seem that they're, they want to do something, I think they, they know, like we know, and I, I heard you say in the beginning of me, you can't wait to get back to the real world, there's a lot of people that feel that way, and I think that if there's any restrictions that can be lifted, I think there's gonna be more and more, a will to try to do that, as long as it still protects the public safety, so we'll see, they're, they're clearly developing a... We'll see. They're they're clearly developing a plan. We'll see what they do on the eighteenth. I'm hopeful that. At least we'll start that process of reopening, but I think it's going to be slow in Massachusetts. Given the fact that we're third in the country in terms of cases.
Thank you.
So, Councilman, just to um, follow up to your question about the state pool. I was on the call with the Y M C A. I I'm part of their Board of Governors. Uh, and the conversation did come up about. The state pool that they did answer the request for proposal. That the state put out, so the state hasn't totally shut that down for the summer yet. But there's no knowledge of whether that will open or not, but they're still going through with their. Request for proposal for people to manage that pool. So. Uh, they've answered that R F P. It's just a waiting game to see if that's actually going to open. So, that's, that's all I know on that right now.
Okay, thank you. I I asked that, um, I was talking to a colleague from work today. And um, she lives in Belmont and she had mentioned that their, their pool is not going to be opening up. For the summer. They already made that decision, so I wasn't sure if we had heard anything. Thank you. And with.
Mr. Chairman, can you just want to make one more comment if I could? Yeah, I had an opportunity today to go over Central Street Parking Lot, and I know there was some pictures put on. Uh, about the work that's been done uh, at Central Street Parking Lot, but. The landscaping company was doing a tremendous amount of work today and it's starting to look fantastic. So. Uh, those of you who haven't had a chance to look at the Central Street Parking Lot. You can see based upon what I saw today, and he told me they were trying to put in all the bushes and plants today. But if you get a chance, you want to take a look at it because it. It was really, really nice to see the major improvements as to the look of that, of that facility.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Council Steve's uh, phone has already died. Uh. So uh, he is doing chat again. So. We'll try to make sure that, uh, keep an eye on that chat function as well. Uh, presentation swearing in, we have none this evening. Citizens forum, I did put this on. We did post that this was uh. That people could call in. I will make an announcement. Is there anyone out there? That wishes to. Speak before the council this evening. Most of the names I see on, on the board, all the names are either town officials or. Yeah, all town officials or town councillors, so I'm going to assume that it's done, but I will make it one more announcement. Anyone? Okay, I do have that included in the special town council meeting. Uh, as well, uh, for um. I believe the capital plan, uh, but it is, we're doing our best to try to get that uh, available. Moving on, item ten, vote to accept. The Southridge Airport's commission request to reduce rents for both Norby Aviation. And the Red Baron Dinah to one hundred dollars per month each. For the months of April and May twenty twenty. Until the governor lists the restrictions upon which normal leases would apply. This is a one-time addendum to both leases. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion by anyone?
Oh.
Second.
Okay, Council Daniel moved the question. Council Manager seconded it. Mr. Town Manager.
I mean.
Your, your mic is off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to talk briefly on this before we turn it over to the airport chairman. Uh, airport commission chairman. Uh, I had a great conversation with Norby Aviation about. Uh, the long-term uh, goal of theirs to stay at the um. At the airport facility. Very, very pleased before this pandemic, uh, they were growing. They felt really good about it. Uh, went way over the top to tell me, you know, how much he appreciates being up there. Wants to have a long-term commitment uh, to the airport, uh, really feels it. Has tremendous potential to grow up there. And he's been, I think, a great tenant for us. Um, it was sort of interesting in the conversation I had with him. Uh, he wasn't necessarily looking for us to, you know, write off the rent or anything and rent like that, but to postpone and. He said he'd be happy if we can give him a break because obviously he has no clients going there right at this time. Uh, but I think if, you know, at least in terms of our conversation. Uh, he is, unless the world keeps going upside down with aviation. Uh, he's committed to to do everything in his power to stay up there. Uh, I did call the Chairman of the Airport Commission. To talk about the issue with him because Norby Aviation reached out to me. Um, Rick Clements, the Chair, the Airport Chairman. Uh, was gracious enough to take on this issue and bring it to the Airport Commission for discussion. I asked him also to include the restaurant because we knew that that was going to be an issue as well. Uh, and the Airport Commission has has met and discussed this and I'll. I'll let the Chairman of the Airport Commission go through that, but I wanted to thank him. Uh, for merely, um, you know, working with me to take over that issue and to move it forward in a positive direction. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Clements, good evening.
Yes, Rick Clements, Chairman and Southbridge Airport Commission. We did a, uh, a, had a meeting, uh, a week and a half ago to discuss this. Both these tenants are very important to the. To the airport, both financially and also to bring, you know, folks into the airport to keep it, keep it active. Uh, we went through a number of different scenarios and what we could do to try to help, uh. Help our, both our tenants, because both of them were shut down, one for being a restaurant, the other one for. Being non-essential and you can't have any gathering. So. After, you know, coming up with, we're looking at different schemes, we thought the best thing we could do at this point is just lower the rent down. To a hundred dollars a month for each for April and May. And into June, if that necessary, depending on what the governor does. And then soon as, soon as the governor lifts restrictions, it would go back to the normal rent. Um, as I put in a letter out to the town manager, this basically. Is about eleven hundred dollar uh. Financial hit to the airport on a monthly basis. However, uh, we were. Part of the Federal Cares Act bill that was passed earlier, the first one that was passed, there was funding given to the F A A. Which is distributed to all airports uh, throughout the, the country. And Southbridge was granted a, or given a thirty thousand dollar grant that we can use. To um. Take care of payroll and any utility expenses we have. So. I think, uh, we, you know, we should better get to through this fine, but we'll also help our tenants bring them through. And the, the diner was supposed to open April first, so, you know, it didn't even open. And uh, again, Kevin Norby's done a great job up there and. And uh, he still has, you know, a few things in his office and he stops by once in a while, but again, he can't run his business. So. We thought this would be great for our tenants and to really say that, you know, we need them there. And we wanted to put forward this, this particular uh, rent decrease.
Okay, thank you. Uh. I will go through Council Katrina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Mr. Chairman, there's many businesses in town. That are not getting a reduction in their rent and that are forced to close because of COVID nineteen. And they're struggling also. They have no income. Uh, landlords just aren't, aren't giving in. Um. The businesses, um, not only are they struggling, but a lot are trying to work with the landlords and the rents are not being reduced. For that reason, I I cannot support this. And I don't think that the town can afford to have this either right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Um, I respect Council Katrina's um, opinion um, and his voice, um, but I'll have to respectfully disagree. It is a town on building, I believe, and um. It, it, it's a, it's a small business that's seasonal. It's unfortunate that this just happened to hap, you know, happen, um. Then the, the, you know. When they were going to open. Um. I, I don't think that our town can afford to lose any businesses, so anything that we can do as a town. To um, to help. Um, the airport diner, I think it would be beneficial to the town. Um, businesses in town. They, they, they have private landlords, they're not the town landlords, and it's. Up to them. I believe this, like the police, they, they can't be evicted um, from the buildings. And whatnot. I believe that they're protected over some laws. So, um, I, I, I think that, um. Us helping the um, the airport diner um, is most beneficial for the town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Council Marketti, do you have anything?
Uh, I would just like to say that, you know, I don't have any problem with this, but. Um. I would like the Economic Development Director to try and find some uh. Help for these small businesses that can't pay their rent. I mean, that's. So she says she does. So if that's what she does, then that's what she should be working on. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Adams? Nothing. Council Daniel?
Uh, yes, please. Through you to Mr. Clements. Um, are there other businesses that are, uh, or other ventures that are lined up? Wanting to come into the airport?
Uh, the only thing, we, we have one person, he's a mechanic that is working there and uh. He's working, you know, if we get, we have one other hangar that we're trying to complete. Once that's done. He wants to move in as a, a full-time mechanic. Uh, to have a business there at the airport. But we have nobody looking to rent the diner and we have nobody. To, you know, as a flight school. Uh, we, we had a really search to get Kevin, Kevin in there this, you know, for the last two and a half years.
Uh, thank you very much. I'm going to support this measure. Uh, that is all.
Thank you. Uh, Council Mina?
Um, yes, I just wanted just to, um. You know. State that there, there are programs out there for the small businesses that, um, they. Um, could have applied for through the stimulus program on the federal government. Um, if they applied in time, um. I'm assuming, but there's got to be, and Rosemary should know this. There's got to be something out there, um, under the, the state guidelines that. People can't be evicted. I know, I don't think landlords can evict like tenants like for their personal living spaces, but. Not sure if the same is true with businesses, so it would be beneficial for Rosemary to. Be heard to diligence and get that information out for the small businesses to try and help them. And I, I support this one hundred percent.
Thank you. Council Katrina, did you have a follow up?
Yes, thank you, although I certainly respect my fellow councillors. Again, I, I simply state that these business owners, small business owners, do not have income. Right now, yet they still have to pay their rents, and I respect that there are programs out there available. But to reduce the rent is something that most. Landlords right now in this town, from what I'm understanding, are not doing. And again, I, for that reason, I, I cannot support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Council Steve's has weighed in saying he has no problem with this. However, the motion, and I'm not sure, because this does say for the months of April and May. Where he's stating that should reduce the rent to a one hundred dollars a month retroactive to April first. And continue as long as the state of emergency will last. Um. I would not. He says he can make that in the mo, uh, form of a motion. Uh, to amend. Um, he also agrees that some other landlords are not fair to tenants, but we have the public service itself. So he agrees with the unique stance. Uh. Tenants, the state did pass special legislation to prevent evictions during this crisis. Uh, the only caveat, I know he made him. It's very difficult to do this in chat, but um. I think. He indicates that as long as the state of emergency lasts. Um. But the motion is as long as the governor lifts the restrictions. Those are two different things. The state of emergency could last for a year. But the restrictions could be lifted that these businesses may be able to operate. So I, I don't know if anybody agrees with my stance on that, my interpretation on that, but Council Mina?
Um, Council, thank you. Um, um. I'm chairman of the event. Yeah, I, I agree with you. The restrictions, not the state of emergency, because the state of emergency. Is, it's, that's what it is. It's a state of emergency. It helps us open up the. The funding for federal um, funds. The restrictions, though, is totally different. And once the restrictions are lifted. Then, you know, it can be business, you know, as usual, gradually going into business as usual. So I agree with you on that.
Thank you. Council Steve has stated he accepts my interpretation. So I appreciate that, Council. Council Marketti?
I would just suggest that we keep it simple and just keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, I respect Council Katrina's uh. Position on this. I, I think I look at it two ways. So I mean. One, we could say that, uh, no, we're not going to reduce the rent. And the business just simply folds and says, I'm done, and then we have to try to find a, a new tenant somewhere down the road, or we work with these. These tenants and, and given the fact that we've received some. State assistance and cares federal money for this. I think that's the intent. Uh, is for us to be able to provide those employ, employers with as much assistance as we can. I mean, perhaps landlords, we can't answer for every public landlord that's out there, but uh, we are. Uh, the Airport Commission does have, uh. The responsibility of that, and they have tenants there. That's their recommendation. Uh, I think we should support the Airport Commission. That's their decision. And perhaps this could be uh, something modeled that uh, people in the public look at that you, you do have to take care of some of these. Um, businesses. And I think if you're a good landlord. Uh, during this time, I don't can tell people how to run their, their uh, properties. But I think I would rather work with a tenant. And say, I will work with you during this two-month period of time or three-month period of time and keep you long-term. As opposed to the potential of that person just folding up shop and walking out, and then I have a vacant storefront. So I'm hoping that those people economically see that sense, but that, that's my take on it. Does anybody else have anything else? Council Nash, I'm sorry I didn't call on you.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, no worries about that. I usually ramble, but in this case, I. Certain hope Mr. Clements doesn't think I'm going to go against this particular measure since I've typically been against the concessions that we've afforded to. Other vendors up near the airport, including the restaurant, uh, given the current circumstances and the fact that. At our last meeting, we decided to waive penalties and interest for taxpayers on property taxes and water and sewer rates. I don't have a big problem with this. Uh, I'll support it, but I'll also. Uh, thank Mr. Clements for reporting that, uh, the airport is operating on some grant funding that was afforded from the Fed. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, did you have anything else?
No, I was just going to comment earlier on the fact that Rosemary is working with a host of businesses. Uh, she's well aware of the grant programs that have been available. Uh, she's also included the S B, the South Business Partnership in that process. So there's a lot of conversation going, going around between business leaders. The partnership and, and the Economic Development Department to apply for. All of those uh, funding mechanisms, mechanisms that are being brought forward by the federal government.
Thank you. Say anything further? Council Manager, do you have anything? I see you like to agree. You all set?
Oh, yeah, I'm all set.
All right, I think I covered every councillor, I believe. All right, we'll go, we'll call Madam Secretary.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrina?
No.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marketti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve's is a yes.
All set? Okay. Yes, everybody? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, uh, Mr. Clements.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right. Item eleven. Vote to reallocate the amount of six thousand five hundred nine dollars and ninety-five cents in remaining funds within the. This year, two thousand twenty, school capital count number six four, six four one. For the replacement of the smoke detectors at West Street School. Okay, I'm reading this the way it was, but this is not the way I sent the motion to the town manager's office. There is three thousand four hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-two cents remaining from the wheelchair van purchase. Two thousand nine hundred and two dollars eighty-six from the fire alarm panel upgrades. And one eighty twenty-seven from the vehicle lease lease. Uh, again, this is not the way it was sent on the repair, uh, repair agenda, but uh, just caught it. Uh, but it is the essence of my mo, uh, of the motion. Is there a motion?
I'm out.
Second.
Mr. Town Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this issue was. Uh, brought up to us through Mike Colwell, the facilities manager. Uh, and the chair talked about this as well. We met with the. School receiver and the finance director to talk about this issue. They thought that this was an important thing to do to take out the remaining funds and some other capital accounts. And to fix the fire alarm system, the panel upgrade. So. Uh, it has the true, the full support of the. Uh, receiver and the business manager, and we think it's a good use of these funds.
Thank you. I see Seth is on. Seth, do you have anything to add, Seth? From the school department?
Uh, good evening, councillors. No, I do not. Um, but appreciate the time, uh, and your support for this measure.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I'll go around. Council Manager, any questions?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Katrina.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Marketti?
Uh, well, what was the difference between your language and this language?
Uh, it was just the way I had it too from, that's all. It's just, it was minor, so it's, it's, the amounts are the same, so it's fine.
All right, thank you.
It's just when you're given an agenda to review and you review it and then it's changed back. It's just a little concern. Uh, Council Nash?
Thank you. Um, I don't think I, I have uh much to ask here, Chairman, but I would ask, without looking back at any documentation that might have been attached, what's the cost of the project for the smoke alarms?
$6,509. That's the entire project. Yes.
Okay, so we just, the amounts from these accounts were, there was money left over and it may not be total amounts from each of those three accounts, correct?
Uh, that's, that's the money that's that were, uh, Karen can answer this, but I asked what were the remaining amounts in those accounts and those were the remaining balances, I believe. But Karen, do you have anything to add on that?
Um, this is Karen Harnoy, the Finance Director. Um, the only thing that I would say is I believe that this is only gonna do West Street School, that there is at least one other school, I believe, that needs to be done. They're requesting the fiscal year 21 capital funds for that.
All set? Counselor Daniel?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
None, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Steve's asked when they were last replaced. How long do they last? Seth, do you have any idea on that?
I believe they were installed when the buildings were renovated uh about 28, 29 years ago.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if the, uh, Chief has something else to add, but I know they have caused an issue of, of faulty reporting to the Fire Department.
Yeah. Chief Norbiden?
Uh, yes, Chief, uh, Chief Norbiden here, uh, to the chair to everybody. Uh, yes, we have over the last six to eight mu- eight months have multiple false alarms with a lot of those smoke detectors and Seth is correct. Uh, those, some of those detectors were as old as 20, 18 to 20 years old. Um, and again, I, I will say to remind all of you is that our municipal fire alarm system went down uh last year at some time. And at this point, uh, I do know all the school buildings are covered, but this is to bring all of the older type equipment to bring up to uh technology that exists today. So this is an important move. Uh, cost effective. I know it's money now, but uh it's wear and tear on our vehicles uh going to all these false alarms. So thank you.
Thank you. And I, I do believe uh that this was identified in the uh, school capital plan uh evaluation, which was the upgrade of the fire alarm panels and smoke detectors when they did the evaluation on that. So did I miss any other counselors? Are there any further questions? See none, roll call.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve's is a yes. And Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm 12. Vote to appropriate $330,628.26 from water retained earnings to the Water Stabilization Fund to transfer the remaining balance of the July 1st, 2019 certified retained earnings to the Water Stabilization Fund. The amount that I indicated is the correct amount. There was an email that was sent to me by the Finance Director, so that is why it was read differently. Uh, it's only a matter of $4, but that is the correct amount that was forwarded to me.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nash, seconded by Counselor Manna. Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, uh, the town has an agreement on IMA with the Town of Charlton. Uh, I think in the last two years, um, we've taken them, whatever balance in the water retained earnings and moved it into the stabilization fund. Uh, Charlton was looking at the um account in a way that we thought was inappropriate. They wanted to count it twice, uh, and we decided myself and the Finance Director and the DPW Director to every year uh clean out that retained earnings and move it into the stabilization fund. So there would be no further issues with uh the Town of Charlton. Uh, this will go on forever as long as the agreement uh continues. But it just frankly, uh, we thought it was fine the way it used to be, but this way just makes absolute clarity to Charlton that they don't get to uh take this money more than once a year, which is, I guess, uh, the way to, to um describe it. With that, the uh DPW Director is also online if you want to, any further information.
Heather, you have anything to add?
Um, no, I think the Town Manager summarized it very well.
Okay. Go on. Counselor Manah, any questions?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Marquetti, question?
Uh, could somebody explain to me what water retained earnings are?
Heather, go ahead.
Um, so at, at the end of the year, um, just like we have free cash for the, the regular budget for this town, the water budget and the sewer budget also have to be certified and they call that the retained earnings. That means it's the total amount that wasn't spent in any given year. Um, what we used to do is just let that accumulate in account. So we have a water budget, we have the budget, and then we also have what we take in as revenues. And whatever is the excess, you can kind of think is your certified retained earnings for that year. They get certified by, um, they get sent into the state. Karen does that. She could understand, give you that process more than I can. But at this time, what you're seeing is that is the difference what, between what we brought in in revenue and what we had we spent in budget. That 330,628.26 last year.
If I could ask a follow-up?
Go ahead, Counselor.
That's, so doesn't that mean that we're overcharging people on their water rates and we could reduce it or doesn't mean that?
It, it doesn't, it, it doesn't totally mean that. Um, so in some cases, what we budget, we don't spend all of our budget just in like other just, you know, we have a budget of what we think we're going to spend, what we think we're going to need. And in some cases, that money doesn't get spent. In other cases, it may be that revenues are, we collect more revenues than we expected, but it's a, it's a balancing act. You gotta remember, this is a four mil-, this is a three and a half million dollar budget. So having excess of 300,000 isn't really that much. Sometimes we might have more fees for connections and stuff than we expected, so that could cause it to be higher or lower from any given year. So running, having $300,000 isn't a bad thing. Um, we actually include in our budget some money so that we can set it aside for projects coming up. So that we have some of that cushion built in. That's part of the budgeting process. That's how we, even part of our rate study.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, just one comment. Chairman Marquetti, uh, it's also that money also can be used for capital projects as Heather talked about. So instead of going out and having to borrow money to fund some kind of capital process, that money can be used for those things, which, which in the long run saves taxpayers money, because instead of paying principal and interest, we can just take it right from that uh stabilization account for that capital purchase. But it actually helps taxpayers over the longer.
You all set, Chairman Marquetti? Just wanna make sure you're all set.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. I'll give you the gavel if you want it. Um, Counselor Katrona?
All set. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, good. Counselor Adams?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Nash?
All good. Thank you.
All right. Um, Counselor Steve's just asking, uh, and I don't know if you have that number readily available. Heather, how much is currently in the fund and when did we last use it for anything?
Ooh, so we did, um, if you remember a couple meetings back, we actually write, uh, voted out the IMA payment to Charlton before we um take it and move it over until our stabilization. So that was probably the last thing that we did with it. Every year, we do fund capital projects out of it. Um, so we did fund some last year. Um, and I don't remember them off of my, my top of my head. So we haven't spent out of stabilization. I just saw Gus's comment come up. We have not taken any money directly out of stabilization. When we do that, I believe that takes two-thirds vote. Right now in stabilization, before we transfer this money, there is 1,742,428.30. Karen and I did confirm that earlier today. So with this vote, it will go up to 2,73156.56 if I did my math right.
Thank you. And we do have some large projects that we may have to do something with that money. So, that's correct.
Correct. And we will be recommending some of the projects in the, for the water capital come out of that money. It is recommended that we keep about a million dollars in there. Um, that comes from some of our accounting recommendations.
Right. So that would be no different and Karen, if you, correct me if I'm wrong, it's no different than the amount of money that we keep in the Town Stabilization Fund, uh, which is required by the bonding companies and all that to maintain our bond rating. The recommendation of, I believe it's six, six to 10%, I think of the town's operating budget should be kept in stabilization. Am I correct, Karen?
Yes, that sounds reasonable.
Thank you. Um, all right. Any further questions? All right, see none. Roll call.
Uh, Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve's? He's a yes. Counselor Adams?
Yes.
And Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 13. Vote to rescind the vote taken on March 30th, 2020, Agenda Item Number Nine. The vote to approve a transfer of $51,120.12 from Project Number 63790 wastewater treatment plant lightning and protection upgrades to Project Number 6364 wastewater treatment plant electrical upgrades generator cover appropriated costs not previously funded. Do I have a motion to rescind?
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, so I guess I'd go to Heather on this. Okay, Heather, uh, reason for the uh motion to rescind?
Um, when we went to finalize this transfer, um, Karen found that we didn't have adequate funds in this account. Um, and it was an oversight by both of our parts. So this is an effort to make this correct. The next motion actually funds it as we originally had hoped to fund the account to its previous, the balance it needed to be funded at on a previous, previously approved amount for funding. So this is a rescinding of the original transfer. And the next vote is a new transfer, including the remaining funds in this account and additional funds out of sewer retained earnings.
Okay. So questions? Uh, Counselor Adams?
None right now.
Counselor Daniel?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Nash?
All set.
Thank you. Counselor Katrona?
All set. Thank you.
Counselor Manna?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Marquetti?
I'm good. Thanks.
Counselor Steve's, anything?
Um, I saw his question and the question had to do, I think we have, we have, it's, it's, should have a zero after it. The new numbers in units put more numbers on there.
So the 63790 is correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right, uh, anything further? See none. Roll call.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Um, yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve's is a yes. Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
And Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is rescinded. Early action. Item 14, vote to approve a transfer of $51,120.12 to Project Number 63 uh, 640 wastewater treatment plant electrical upgrades generator 5,745.84 from Project Number 6379 wastewater treatment plant lightning protection upgrades and 45,374.28 from sewer retained earnings to cover appropriated costs not previously funded. So I guess it should be a zero at the end of that one as well, because, correct?
That is correct.
All right. So it's actually 63790. Uh, is there a motion?
No. Second.
Uh, go to Counselor Adams and move that and Counselor Manna, second. And I apologize, that's where, um, there for discussion, Heather, who on, just, I know you, anything else to add on this one?
Um, I think the only thing that probably will be asked is how much do we have in sewer retained earnings? So we have 1,856.800, sorry, 1,856,885.
Okay. Questions? Counselor Manah, anything? Counselor Katrona?
All set. Thanks.
Counselor Marquetti?
I'm good. Thanks.
Counselor Nash?
No, thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
All set. Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Oh, thank you.
Counselor Steve's all set. Seeing no further discussion, roll call.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve's? He's a yes. Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Item 15. Vote to transfer $150,000 from Project Number 67900 landfill royalties to Project Number 9105 Special Appropriation Town Manager Legal cover invoices dealing with the well water issues at the landfill. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Second. A motion by Counselor Manna, seconded by Counselor Daniel, this is Town Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This should be no surprise to Town Counselors. We've had a lot of discussion about this case. Um, we've been trying to do the transfers a few months at a time. Uh, and then we get the reimbursement from ZERIS Insurance Company. So all this money is refundable uh, from the insurance company. Instead of doing all the money at once, we've been kind of doing this on a, say, every three-month type of basis. Um, I sent you a letter. I, I, I just asked our Counsel to kind of give me an update as to the timing of, of when this heavy part of the work uh is gonna be completed and he's got another two to three months of work uh to analyze all the data that he had to research and the emails and everything like that. So he expects heavy bills for the next three months and then after that uh it should slow down, but then there'll be further times where the case is very busy and there'll be more money involved. Um, but this is, you know, that's really all I can talk about in public session, but pretty much what we've all known and we've had a lot of discussion about this case overall. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, Counselor Dan?
Well, thank you.
Counselor Adams?
All right now. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Nash?
So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marquetti?
I do have some questions about the uh joint defense tolling agreement.
That would be an executive session agreement, so we would have to discuss in an executive session.
Well, you put this on tonight's agenda and this is what it's dealing with. So I don't see how you could put this on the agenda when it's, when it has to do with that agreement.
It has to do with, this agenda item is for legal bills. Your uh just request to discuss this in open meeting is improper at this time.
Well, I don't feel that we should even have this on tonight's agenda then. This is something that, this is dealing with what we talked about at executive session.
I would caution you to be careful of what we said in the executive session, Counsel. This is real relative to the payment of legal bills. Uh, if you wish to table it, Counselor, your discussion is improper in open session. This is an ongoing litigation matter. It would be only, it's improper to discuss the actual uh litigation matter. This is to discuss the transfer of available funds to cover legal expenses only.
Well, then I don't think we should be spending any legal funds. Cause I don't think we should be doing anything with this. I think we should be settling out of court. Thank you.
Counselor Marquetti, I'm gonna uh wish that you cease any conversation on this. You are close to violating an open meeting law uh discussion. Any, Counselor Katrona?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Manna? Thank you, Counsel Manna?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Steves, uh, he said it's no surprise. It's getting really old. Uh, he did ask about doing executive session online. Uh, we do have one for next week. Relative to a request by a counselor for minutes to an executive session, we, we can add that to the agenda at that time. Anything further? On this about transfer, Counsel Nash, I don't know, did I miss you? I apologize.
All set, thank you.
Thank you. See none, roll call.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves? Is a yes? Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
And Counsel Manna?
Okay, thank you.
I'll call you.
Just as a matter of, uh, record, uh, everything that is in chat, that is recorded in chat, does become part of the, uh, formal record. Um, just for anybody that, uh, is using chat, it does get attached to the, uh, record of this meeting. Item sixteen. Vote to transfer three thousand dollars from salary and wages account number zero, zero, one, two, two, zero dot five, one, one, zero, zero, zero to salaries and wages, part-time call, department account number zero, zero, one, two, two, zero dot five, one, one, seven, zero, 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 zero motion?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Mayor, Counsel Dan, seeing how the town manager is no longer participating in this meeting, fire chief.
Counsel, Chairman and the rest of the counselors, uh, this was, uh, a, a move to, uh, up put more, uh, monies into our budget for the call department. Uh, right now, we currently sit at about six hundred dollars in the account. Uh, as we have, uh, callbacks and first alarms, uh, these, uh, call members do come back to, uh, to, uh, help us out in any time of emergency. Uh, we are instituting, uh, some training sessions through May and June also. Uh, obviously with the six foot, uh, training, I mean, excuse me, six foot, uh, uh, distance apart from each other, so there is going to be training, uh, presented during, uh, May and June. Three thousand dollars gets us, uh, pretty close to the hump as long as we don't have an overabundance of callbacks for the call department. And I feel confident that three thousand dollars will cover us to the end of the year.
Mr. Manager, since you're back, do you have anything else to add?
No, I'm good. I just had to use the restroom for a second, but it, the chief is very capable and did a good job.
Thank you. Counsel, uh, Counsel Manna, any?
No, I, I support this, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Katrona?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Nash?
Oh, thank you, good.
Counsel Daniel?
All set, thank you.
Counsel Adams?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm, thanks.
Thank you. Hey, roll call.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves? He's a yes. Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
And Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Item seventeen, vote to transfer four thousand dollars from salary and wages account number zero, zero, one, two, two, zero dot five, one, zero, zero, zero to repair and maintenance of vehicles account number zero, zero, one, two, two, zero dot five, two, four, one, zero, zero, zero. Zero motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Uh, Chief Norman, I guess?
Yes, uh, so I will be honest to say, this would be our third time this, uh, season over the last three to four months making a transfer for available repairs to be completed on, uh, the ambulance that we're trying to replace on this capital, uh, upcoming capital budget. Uh, we had a, a second incident with a fuel injector code. Uh, the vehicle is still in service, uh, but it does have an engine light on. Um, at this point, I feel it's, it's still very important to move forward in repairing this vehicle. The last repair was estimated around, actually, the last repair was around twenty-two hundred dollars. Um, the reason for the four thousand dollars is that engine one, which is our frontline apparatus, just had a valve problem. Um, so a- as we move through the rest of this year, and as I've explained in, in previous meetings on this account, uh, our vehicles are older and again, we do have a replacement on the capital for the, 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 the unit that we're we're dumping a lot of money into, and I think it's important to, uh, move forward with this, uh, this transfer and, and can fix our vehicles. We do new three ambulances, as I explained earlier, our call volume is steadily going back up and, uh, you know, I really appreciate the transfer to go through.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Nash, any questions?
No, thank you.
Counsel Marquetti? No questions, Counsel Manna?
No, I'm all set, I support this.
Thank you. Counsel Daniel?
All set, thank you.
Counsel Adams?
All set.
Counsel Katrona? Okay. I kind of lost him, was he all set?
I didn't hear me the chairman.
Counsel Katrona, were you all set? Cause I kind of lost you.
All set, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Steves, you all set? Okay, thank you. I know we do have the conversation on the, uh, agenda for the new ambulance, and I know with the uh, issues that we have with the budget, but I, I think that we have to have a real honest conversation about the replacement of that ambulance to keep pumping money into it. We are not a town that can survive on two ambulances. Uh, and if the lead time to order the ambulance is, uh, eight months or so, six to eight months, um, uh, we really have to have that conversation when we discuss this on the capital next week, uh, to see about, uh, the ability to, to, to get this done sooner rather than later. Uh, was pushed off a year, um, and it's just coming home to roost now that we put it off a year in the capital plan, but, uh, that I support this reluctantly, uh, but we do have an older fleet and we do have to keep those ambulances, uh, running with the call volume that we have. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything else to add?
No, I agree with your comments, Mr. Chairman. This is not one of the, uh, cuts or postponements in the free cash distribution that we're suggesting, so, uh, I agree we should move as quickly as we possibly can to, to order that ambulance.
Thank you. Alright, roll call.
Counsel Steves? He's a yes. Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
And Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item eighteen, vote to accept from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department of Fire Services for round two washer extractor grant award of six thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Is there a motion?
Some of them.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Manna, second by Counsel Adams, uh, Chief Norman or Chief Hewlock, I see Chief Hewlock's here. Uh, want to give him, to him, Chief?
Chief Hewlock, go ahead.
Alright, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Counselors. Uh, as you're aware from our past discussions, that, uh, keeping our firefighters' gear clean is, uh, one of the issues that we face uh, dealing with the aging building and the aging, uh, infrastructure that we have within the building. Uh, the, uh, first round of that grant, we did not apply for because it was essentially for communities that did not even have an extractor. Uh, we do have an extractor that's about twenty years old at this point. Um, and does not meet the standard, uh, of, uh, the NFPA at the current level for, uh, year. So the second round came out and we were able to apply for that. Uh, we did submit a proposal. I'd like to thank, uh, firefighter Colin Matthews and, uh, firefighter uh, Ryan Morton for participating in that as well. Uh, we did submit a proposal for, uh, a substantially larger machine and we were awarded the funding for it. Uh, unfortunately, with the infrastructure within the building, we were not able to, uh, feasibly install that machine. So we've selected a smaller machine that does, uh, basically plug and play in the current, uh, facility infrastructure. What, the, uh, machine is, uh, essentially, uh, the casing of a residential washing machine that does meet the NFPA standard, uh, for taking, uh, care of the gear.
Okay, questions, uh? Chief Norman, you have anything else to add? Go ahead, Chief.
As the, uh, deputy, I know this is tough times financially and with the COVID going on. Uh, this is another indication that our building is, uh, infrastructure is very old. We've, uh, involved the electrical inspector and the plumbing inspector to evaluate the larger machine. Uh, but unfortunately, uh, we would probably had to put ten to probably fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars worth of upgrades to make that secondary, the, the bigger machine work out. So I know this is tough times, but, uh, we just need to remember, you know, the fire station, the new fire station should be on the back burner for everybody. Uh, again, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any questions, uh, Counsel Manna, any question?
No, I'm all set, I support this.
Thank you, Counsel Katrona?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Counsel Marquetti?
No. Thanks.
Counsel Nash?
No, thank you.
Counsel Daniel?
All set, thank you.
Counsel Adams?
None at this time, thank you.
Counsel Steves is all set. Roll call.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
And Counsel Steves is a yes.
Thank you. Chief, thank you, both of you. Thank you very much for putting that forward. Item nineteen, vote to accept Comstar ambulance bill and service, two thousand and twenty rate changes for the town's self-coverage fire department effective immediately upon council approval. Is there a motion?
Some of them.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Manna, second by Counselor Adams, this is town manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On a regular basis, uh, we evaluate the rates for ambulances that we charge. Um, the fire chief has sent you a form or, or put a attachment of a form and, and specifically, we're looking to make the rates the same as what basically is happening a lot throughout the state. As you know, most of these insurance rates are paid by insurance companies. These ambulance rates are paid by insurance company. I did talk to the chief today because I was trying to make sure I clearly understood, uh, the memo he gave us. If you look at the middle column, average bundled, Constar top fifty, uh, those are the rates that the chief is uh, recommending that we change to from our current rates. Uh, again, it's consistent with what other, uh, ambulance companies, fire departments are doing. Nothing unusual, but we want to make sure our rates reflect, uh, the rate that we would be able to get, uh, from the insurance companies and I'll turn it over to the fire chief for any additional comments.
Chief Norman?
I'll, uh, just, uh, sit back and see if there's any questions. Uh, the town manager, uh, explained it quite perfectly and we'll just move forward with that.
Okay, Counsel Mayor, do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions and I support this.
No questions, thank you.
Counsel Marquetti?
Uh, just like to know what this is. I mean, is this? They don't do our billing, they're just telling us that, how we should do our billing? I'm sorry, just a little confused on.
Go ahead. No, that's okay, that's okay. It's a good question, a good question. Uh, Chief Norman?
So to, uh, Counsel Marquetti, yes, they do do our billing. They are billing, billing fiduciary. Uh, when we transport a patient to the hospital, uh, electronically, we send the, uh, paperwork to the billing agency. They follow all co-Medicare codes and, uh, regulations for coding in the billing process. Uh, they're a top-notch company. We've been using them for, since two thousand fourteen, I believe, was the first time we've, we started using them. Uh, we've evaluated billing companies before in the past through RFP process and these guys really do a good job for us. This form, the middle column, is what their suggested average, um, bill rate is for. Uh, they do over, well over two hundred ambulance services, either fire department or private ambulance service. We get this form once a year in January to set our new rates. Um, and this is where we're at right now, at that, that middle column. I'd like to move those rates forward. I hope I answered your question.
This is something that we can't do in-house through, through you, Mr. Chairman. It's better to go through a billing service rather than do it in-house.
Chief Norman? Then?
So I will tell you, Counsel Marquetti, that the coding in medical billing world changes on a daily basis. These people are definitely professionals at their field. I can tell you that we would probably have to hire one or two more full-time billing coders, uh, within the, the town to make this all happen. Um, so my recommendation is that we continue with a billing agency. We do get a percentage every year for, uh, we do pay them a percentage every year, uh, that is through the RFP that they get paid for. Uh, so I think this is definitely, uh, better bang for the buck using an agency, staying up with the legal ramifications of Medicare and Mass Health and all those things.
Alright, thank you.
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be Captain Obvious here and just verify that the far-right column, which is cut off on the attachment is simply for the effective date? That is a question.
I will say, yes, that those, the blank column on the far-right-hand side of your document, uh, it did appear to, uh, cut itself off. That will be where I will, uh, have the town manager sign the new rates, uh, effectively taking the middle column and moving it to the far-right with those numbers in there and the town manager can sign it off as the, uh, town manager.
Thank you. I, I figured as much, but don't want to forget to ask him something that, uh, otherwise was critical. Thank you.
I, I wasn't sure to be, I wasn't honest to be sure if you wanted to go higher, but I, I, that's why we left them blank. The recommendations will be depending on the vote to move, uh, the middle, the middle column to the far-right.
Counsel Daniel?
I'm all set, thank you.
Counsel Adams?
None at this time, thank you.
Alright, Counsel Steves has two questions, I guess. One, how much does it actually cost us in hourly wages for staff and consume medicals and equipment to do these runs? The rates seem really high for someone in dire need. And second question, how is specialty care different from ALS one or two, which is advanced life support, one or two? So I guess if you want to answer the first question, I mean, the second question first, and then get into how much it costs per run. So, go ahead, Chief.
So Counsel Steves and the rest of the counselors, thank you. Uh, that, those are two very good questions. I could go on for a couple of hours on these two questions to give you the, uh, the accounting and the reason why for these things, but the basic premises on the, uh, the specialty care in the ALS one or two, uh, each one of those are different levels of paramedic-level care. Uh, ALS one is the customarily basic first level that we usually bill most of the time. Uh, that is usually someone that would get an IV, an EKG, uh, maybe some nitroglycerin or some aspirin for their care. An ALS two would be, uh, a little bit more intensive where they'd get the IV, they'd get the medic, uh, 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 nitroglycerin and maybe some clot busting, uh, uh, stuff, uh, medications and IV medications. So it's a little bit more I will say a sicker patient would fall, qualify into that ALS two where, you know, obviously we're pushing more medicines to save someone's life. Uh, and the specialty care piece, we don't use those all that much. Uh, I will tell you that doing the, uh, emergent transfers, when we're called from Harrington Hospital, uh, someone that's having a massive MI that was either walked into the emergency room at, at Harrington or a bad trauma patient, when Harrington would call us to their facility and transfer the, these really super sick patients, uh, to either UMass or Bay State or the appropriate, uh, tertiary care hospital outside of the Harrington facility, uh, those specialty care ones would kick into that, at that point. Uh, to answer your, your other question, let me just digest it for one second.
I, I just want to add while the chief's still looking at that, I know from, uh, an insurance perspective of when I did, uh, injury claims for auto insurance carriers, insurance carriers look at this very specifically and we have to go on by what the chief had mentioned by the coding levels. So each coding level, Counsel Marquetti, for your point, each coding level is a specific level, um. Um, and you can't bill outside of that. So, uh, your documentation has to match what you're billing. Um, and that, that's the only way that you can get paid. So in order to build this out, uh, you really have to have that specialty, uh, type company that does this on a regular basis and not leave it just to an in-house person, because if you don't bill it correctly, the insurance companies will kick it back because you have not coded it, uh, correctly. And, uh, the chief is correct, those codes change all the time with what you can bill and what you can't bill. It's very technical. Um, and I, I, I just know that, that we, on the, on the private sector insurance side, we take a close look at, uh, the level of services that are provided and how that is billed accordingly, reflected on the records. So, Chief Norman?
So without jumping into the database and talking with Comstar directly to get all these, these, uh, this information on the second question, it's kind of a, I guess I'll, I'll present it this way. Yes, the rates do seem really high. But obviously, uh, Comstar, who does billing for multiple agencies through just not only Massachusetts, but all of the East Coast. Uh, these are customarily the prices that, uh, we charge, uh, throughout the, you know, the state of Massachusetts a- and beyond. Uh, so this is just a, this is a recommendation from Comstar. Uh, on top of that, we do collect, uh, without giving you the exact numbers on this. But I can tell you, uh, within the last seven to eight years, we've collected around a million dollars in returns and revenue for, uh, the town toward doing ambulance service. So it's, it's a little less than half of our operating budget. So I, I can get, uh, the information or the questions, how you have it broken down, uh, at a later date. But I could tell you just right now, we do well on our returns for the, uh, this population that we have and the clientele that we deal with.
I, I, I don't know, Chief, if you would, um, agree with me, I'll get, Councilman, I know how this question. But I just want to also state that you also have to look at, yes, uh, it's the staff, but you also have to look at the overhead, the cost of the ambulances that you're running, uh, the licenses, the medications, the equipment that's in, in the, uh, uh, an ambulance alone, we're looking at, um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an ambulance. So to analyze that over the number of years that you keep that ambulance. So every, everything has a cost. I will say that those Comstar averages are what I do see in the insurance industry as regular, uh, the normal type rates, or I don't think there's anything outrageous on that rate structure. Council Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to, um, Chief Normandin. So I know like, and like, uh, um, when you go for a doctor's visit a- and, and stuff, that sometimes like the rates are negotiated with the insurance company. Is that true too with the, um, with the billing service, I mean, for the ambulance services? I mean, do you have, um, do they negotiate the rates that they're going to pay with you? I mean, you, you set a standard rate, but are there some negotiated rates?
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, to answer Council Mayor's question, if you mind. That, that is a great question. I can honestly tell you that the only managed rate is the Medicare mass health rate. Um, it is far lower than these rates that I've shown you right here, right now. Um, the rates that we're showing right now are set primarily for the HMOs, HMO Blue, Tufts, Fallon, uh, those type of rates. So the clientele that would be paying, this is, this is a hundred percent of the rate. And because of, because of Medicare and mass health regulations, which I just explained, it changes on a daily basis. Uh, those are the only rates that, we can't even negotiate them. They're set. So we're taking a great deal of a loss, um, with, with some of those Medicare reimbursements, actually most of those reimbursements.
Okay, thank you. The, um, and, and, but I mean, for people who have the insurance, I'm sure like, I mean, it depends on their coverage and everything, but I mean, if somebody didn't have insurance by chance in the state of Massachusetts and it does happen, um, you wouldn't refuse them ambulance service or anything, correct?
We, we do not refuse anybody. We talk to them, we, we evaluate them, we triage them, we talk to them to their best ability. Um, we do have people that when they, they, we do get to their homes, they do decide at some point, you know, I'm not going to take the ambulance. Uh, we obviously have medical control and, and go through the proper protocols to make that all happen. Uh, but sometimes they do evaluate themselves and with the information that we give them. Um, and I'll be honest with you, with this COVID thing, uh, we've had a lot of refusals, uh, not just because of the cost, but it's part of the cost. But it also is that a lot of people call us and want some advice and then we go over to their ho- homes and we give them their advice and then they decide not to go to the hospital because they don't want to, you know, be at the hospital. But ultimately, you know, uh, Chairman Manor, you, you are correct. Um, you know, this cost is high. Oh, excuse me, not Chairman, Councilman Manor, uh, next year, when you rea- when you run re- for reelection. Uh, but, but, uh, yes, you, you are correct. Uh, it is quite high. But I can honestly say through our process of abatement, um, through Co- uh, Comstar Billing Agency, uh, these people do have the ability to pay back a little bit at a time. Um, and that's kind of what we do. We have a whole financial system set up that goes between, uh, uh, Melissa and myself. Um, and we, we make it work for citizens and, and, you know, obviously there's some other avenues that, uh, they can take in regards to that on payment. So, uh, we do the best we can to, to the citizens of town.
Okay, and just, just to follow up, um, there are services out there that help people who are in those situations who can't afford those bills that needed to go to the hospital. I mean, just like the hospital, they have a fund and, and stuff, I mean, to help the patients out and to, or to put them on some. Do you like give them, and do you have any information you can give these people or does your billing company have anything? They can give these people where they can find the resources and possibly, you know, help with stuff paid.
I, I will say that the Comstar is very good at giving these people information. Obviously, if they're using the ambulance service, I'll be kind of blunt here. If they're using the ambulance service, they're not just going to have the ambulance service bill to deal with if they don't have insurance. They'll be contacted. I'll be right out of the chute and say Harrington Hospital will contact them, them within a couple of days of them being discharged from the facility and want their money. Um, so I believe the hospital works with a system to tell them you can go here, there, and you can apply for these funds and things like that. So yes, and we try to do the same thing with the, uh, on the ambulance side. But I will say, i- i- this is a business, um, and people do need emergency care and we will not refuse them. Uh, but we, we do the best we can on, uh, on working on some sort of, uh, abatement or reduction in pay of, of, of the payment. Um, through, uh, you know, they can make, uh, monthly, uh, payments to that. Uh, Melissa and I have worked, uh, not a great deal because we don't get a lot of those requests. I'll be honest with you. A lot of people just ignore the multiple, um, bills that they receive from Comstar. And then the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, collections agency, the same thing. So we usually end up, uh, after a two-year period, wiping those off because we can't take them to court because it's, it's, it's just not feasible to do that.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Uh, Chief, one question from Council Steve's. How often do we write off, uh, the calls or the bills? Do you have any idea?
I do. Actually, we do it every June just before the fiscal, the, the new fiscal year starts. Um, and I think I've reported that last year, the amount we wrote off. Um, you'd be surprised on the amount of uncollectibles. Uh, like we've, uh, many years ago in two thousand thirteen or fourteen, when we started with Comstar, they were the only agency that had a, uh, a collections agency that was available. Um, the collection agency doesn't collect a lot. A lot of people just ignore it and we end up writing it off because it's just, it will, it's uncollected debt.
Okay. Uh, Council Steve's, I'll just write it off as, uh, uh, not write it off on, I apologize for that. Your word for the part of the record, because Council Steve's is messages, I have always had a problem with seeing public government service as a business. We're supposed to be of, by, and for the people. So that's his comment for the record. Okay, Council Marquetti, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Oh, I'm good. Thanks.
Uh, uh, I saw your light green. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anybody else. Anybody else? All set. Roll call.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marquetti? Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve's? Says yes. Council Adams?
Yes.
And Council Katrona?
Yes.
Thank you. Item twenty, this was, uh, brought forward, discussion to potentially fund cancer screening for the entire fire department. This is a discussion piece at this time. Um, this came out of, uh, the PPP subcommittee, uh, hearing or meeting that want to have further discussion about this. Um, so that's why it's on here for the cancer screening for the entire fire department. Um, so, Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you recall, this actually came up some time ago. Uh, the union contract that we negotiated with the firefighters' union, uh, we added funding for a number of firemen to go for these, uh, screening. I believe it was a thousand dollars a pop, although I'll, I'll have the fire chief talk about that. And at the time, um, when we brought it before you guys in the collective bargain agreement, town council thought, you know what, maybe we could go a little farther here and just simply test all the firemen at one time instead of having so many each year. And truthfully, at the time, I was fine with that. Um, the town was in better shape fiscally at that time. And I felt that that was a pretty good idea and, you know, we didn't really make a decision on it, but it's something that the council wanted to explore. Um, however, I think now, given the timing and what's going on with the coronavirus, the fact that, you know, we spent a lot of time as the town council and myself and department heads in reducing all the different town budgets and the fact that every town budget, every town department head that wants to get a transfer or spend anything over five hundred bucks needs approval. Uh, I frankly, I could be totally supportive of this. I just think that it will send a, a really bad message through all the departments if we do it right now. When we're cutting everybody else's budget to give firemen a new added benefit that is not collectively, collectively bargained for. So I, I'm not against this. I just think we should postpone it till we get back to normal business and a normal budget process. Uh, so that, um, I, I just think this is the wrong time, given all the cuts we're making and all the spending pieces we're doing. Um, I just think it would anger a lot of department heads at this time, but I think it's a good idea. I think it's something we should do in the future, once the budget's back to normal. Uh, and I think it's a benefit that it does make sense to give to our firemen. So, uh, I don't, you know, normally these items are collectively bargained for. Uh, but I think this is something that if the town chooses and council chooses in the future to give it to the firemen, I, I, I don't, I wouldn't object to it under normal budget, uh, budget times, but that's my concern at this time. It, I think it would, would really go contrary to everything else we're trying to do in terms of budget process. But I, you know, and I can't say that this is a bad idea. I think it's a good idea and then you should do in the future. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Council Steve's has weighed in. He says, uh, first, I think it makes sense to do them all now. Instead of baseline for everyone and maybe catch a few cancers early enough to do them some good. He also adds that it's not an added benefit, it's protecting our staff. Very few of our other people face the kinds of toxins firefighters do. So I will, I will echo Council Steve's sentiments. I think I was pretty vocal last year when this came up. If you remember during the budget season, I think I was pushing that at the time, we had the money available to do that. And, uh, and it was put off a, a, another year. Um, so, and I understand the, the strains of municipal budget and where we're at right now. I find it hard to believe that other department heads would be, or other departments would find it, uh, upsetting that we would want to protect the most, uh, those individuals that put their lives on the line, uh, in some stressful and dangerous situation. So I really take offense at that comment that other departments would, would, i- if other departments did find that unbelievable, um, that's regretful because these firefighters, I put themselves in, uh, situations that are very dangerous as our law enforcement do as well. Um, I'll go around. So Council Daniel, I see your light is green. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I'm definitely in support of having it all done now. Um, I understand that there are financial risk constraints. Um, however, we're talking about men and women's lives and the sacrifice that they're doing for us. I know that there are other departments that come to us for safety gear and for safety considerations. And it's, it's my recall that, uh, we've never begrudged a department some type of a safety consideration. Um, I think that this is the ultimate safety when you're talking about the potential for someone, uh, literally risking their life in the service of the town. And, um, I want to echo you, Chair, and, uh, Council Steve's and say that I think um, it would behoove us to do it now to get a baseline and to, uh, perhaps find something early and, uh, nip it in the bud. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Council, uh, Marquetti, do you have anything?
I remember we had this discussion last year about this and I asked why this wasn't covered under the insurance. And I know there wasn't, someone gave a pretty good answer on it, but I don't recall what it was. Why cancer screening isn't included in their insurance, uh, premium, uh, coverage?
Council, uh, Chief Norman, did you recall that, by any chance? Melissa's, Melissa's, Melissa's light turned green, so we'll give it to Melissa. Go ahead, Melissa. I think you did answer that too last year, Melissa. So thank you.
Yeah, so the, the cancer screening for the fire department falls under their, um, one eleven F coverage, which is outside of our health insurance provided to employees. So we like to keep very separate personal health issues, um, and employment-related injuries or illnesses. And so we, what we're not, why we don't, we don't send, um, we don't send employees to get screenings or to, um, find out if they broke their leg, you know, walking out of town hall, um, through the, um, their personal health insurance. This is part of, um, what's covered under, um, what's called one eleven F injured on duty. And the cancer presumption is part of that, um, mass general law. And that is why this is a separate coverage.
You all set with that answer, Council Marquetti?
Yep, thank you.
You all set with that? Okay.
Yep.
Council Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So I, I support this, um, one hundred percent. Um, it's, it's looking after the employees, the people who protect our town. Um, and I, I, you know, what, however this falls under the mass general law with the insurance, I feel like it's preventative, like preventative maintenance, you know? Uh, it's, it's a preventative, like, medical to, to, to insure. Like, we, we just get those screenings and stuff. And, um, if you nip something in the butt before, i- i- if you can, before it gets too out of control, then you're much better off. Um, I think this is, um, this is crucial for the fire department. So I fully support it one hundred percent.
I, I couldn't say for sure. I also think that you're just not, um, it would almost be like selective, because if I just walked into, um, the doctor's office and said, I want a cancer screening for lung cancer, they would, they would send me away. Um, and, and it's under their, um, it's under their job and their job condition that makes them higher risk than, than say myself. I, I'm guessing on that, but that's, I know that they won't, uh, give me screenings that, because I want them, you know, the medical insurance works these days.
Uh, Council Mayor, you had a follow-up?
Yes, so just to follow up on that, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Um, I understand that we as individuals can't go into the doctor's office and tell them, you know, we want lung cancer screening or, or anything like that. However, you know, women over a certain age or if they have cancer in their, um, in their families, they can get those mammograms once a year and the insurance company covers them. It's, it's, it's preventative. They're, they're, they're looking for that. They're screening for that. Uh, because they know that women are more apt to get that. Um, and a firefighter is running into a building and word knows what's burning in those walls. We have some very old buildings in this town, a lot of asbestos still, a lot of lead paint. Um, so who knows what they're, you know, they're running into. Even some of the policemen who get there before the fire department. Um, so I, I, I understand what you're saying, Melissa. Um, but there is preventative maintenance when it comes to cancer screenings. Um, and maybe it's like the, the, the insurance laws or laws that we have to get changed to better help protect every single firefighter in the state of Massachusetts and make it mandatory that they get a screen. to better help protect every single firefighter in the state of Massachusetts and make it mandatory that they get screened for cancer. Maybe somebody should start advocating for that. Um, but again, I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Council Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I know we've discussed this previously. Glad to see it, uh, have some resurgence. A resurgence, but I guess I'd just ask, uh, if Chief or Deputy Chief want to speculate what the opinions of the individual firefighters and the union would be in the matter.
Okay. Council, uh, Chief Norman?
So, th- thank you, uh, Counselor, uh, Nash for bringing that up. Um, uh, from the top, from myself to the deputy, and I don't want to speak for him, but this is something. If I had something brewing in my body that I didn't know about until I went for my fifty-five-year-old, uh, physical in two more years, I'd like to know sooner. Um, I can tell you that the sentiments of the firefighters are in the same boat. Uh, we have, I'll just give you a, a scenario. If it does happen, we got, uh, a guy that's twenty-four years old, two kids. And if we wait any further to do this, um, you know, this could be picked up pretty quickly and hopefully treatment can happen quickly and move forward, um, you know, with, with getting appropriate treatment. Whereas if we wait another year, this could morph into something worse and then will, cost of the town would, would be huge in regards to, uh, additional medical expenses. Uh, the firefighters are very passionate about this. This is why they brought it to the table during the collective bargaining agreement. I think the other thing for the caveat to, to think about the process that's set in, in place is that, um, before they can even go to the cancer testing, uh, they do go to their regular physicians for a regular physical. Uh, so they're getting baseline blood tests on that aspect, uh, from their regular physical, from their physician. Uh, before they can even walk through the door to get the specialized testing at Harrington Hospital. On the second note, I can tell you that the firefighters, our local firefighters union, I'm supposed to be manager here, but I can tell you that the firefighters union has been very active in this role statewide. Uh, they have pushed forward to get this program set up, uh, through, uh, Harrington Hospital. It is very similar to a Boston facility that, uh, is like the advanced, is one of the best advanced, uh, cancer facilities in the whole state or almost the, the whole country. Um, so this is merit on a program that was based out of Boston. And I can proudly say that our members went forth and got the information and worked it out. Prior to the deputy and my, uh, we maybe have known a little bit of it, but they put it all together and worked with Harrington to get the special pricing and Harrington to upgrade their software and different techniques on to make this happen. Uh, so again, I think it's, it would be an injustice if we don't move forward with this, but it's totally up to you guys on, on what we have to do. Um, I hope that answered your question, uh, Council Nash.
Chairman, Chairman, I just, should I throw out some numbers for just in regards to this? Or we, should we bring this to another meeting, uh, for a possible vote?
No, I, I, I mean, well, it's a discussion on potentially funding it. I mean, certainly we could bring it forward, uh, next, uh, council meeting as far as, uh, getting on there uh, as a formal agenda item. But, uh, yeah, I, I know we did five already because we had the five thousand dollars this year. Correct? Uh, we would have five thousand dollars budgeted next year as well. So, um, and there would be no testing for next year, correct? If we did everybody in the department, is that correct? Or, or, or potentially if you had a new employee, right, uh, whatever we have. We would budget it, but.
So I guess let me explain, uh, uh, yes, we had a conversation regards to this, um. Right now, we, we have budgeted five thousand dollars for the upcoming budget starting in July. Uh, that will do five, uh, five guys. If we add an additional twenty-two thousand dollars to that five thousand, that brings us to twenty-seven thousand dollars. That should effectively cover the entire full-time department and the call department with and also the administration, the deputy and myself, uh, moving forward. So that, that's kind of the baseline numbers where we're at right now. The, the, the following year, we would start the cycle all over again, um, and start retesting people in regards to people that just went last year. So this is going to be an, a continuous, ongoing process as we move forward. To close that, we say, well, say, say if someone just went this last year and had a clean bill of health. In two years, they go back and they find something. They're going to say, okay, so there's only a two-year window that we have to look at to look at the exposure and then see what members were, were involved with that incident or potentially involved with that incident and then retest those guys quickly. This is purely preventative maintenance on all of our staff. It really truly is. It's a safety, safety measure to keep our firefighters employed till their thirty-two-year retirement and their families, uh, you know, having, uh, birthdays and things like that. So.
Okay. Okay. Um, Counselor Adams, questions? Counsel Adams, do you have any?
Chair through you, uh, just to go back to see, just to go back, there's some lag time. How much would it be for if, if the council were to fund this for this fiscal year besides the five thousand dollars already but possibly budgeted for?
So we would need twenty-seven thousand dollars this year to, to fund this fully.
That's on top of the five thousand?
Uh, Council, that's including the five thousand.
Thank you.
For this fiscal year? Hold on, hold on. There's some lag. Go ahead, Counsel Adams.
Thank you. So obviously I'm in, I'm in support of this. Um, brought this up, uh, we brought this up at the PPP, uh, budget, just to have a conversation about it. Uh, I'm going to agree with Counsel Steve and all the other counselors, provides the baseline, early prevention, monitoring. Um, you know, we haven't done this, I don't think this town has done this in the past at all. Um, if we continue to wait, um, where do we go from there? I will say, and I saw where Counsel Steve's also mentioned about reserve funds, um, help maybe offset the costs of some of this as well. I know that cancer, you know, with firefighters, I did a little bit of simple research myself. You know, by fifty-five years old is where we, we find a lot of firefighters, but then have, have the can't, the lung cancer themselves. And, um, you know, you never know what, uh, older firefighters are going through right now, uh, without proper screening. So waiting another four years, um, uh, to, to monitor some of these individuals, i- it may be too late. It may be already the system. Though I do applaud the negotiating as far as through the town and through the union themselves that, uh, they, they work on at least, you know, uh, putting away five thousand a year to test everything. But if we, we do have those funds, um, I think with this, it's money well, well spent for it. Um, the only other, I guess my other question here is, is, um, the union president, is he aware that we're having this discussion this evening?
Um, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Okay. All right. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, just, just for clarity, because I'm getting a little confused with the budget years. So there, there's a couple of ways to go about this and whatever you guys want to do, we can work it out, myself and the finance director. You can fund it in the current year we're in. We could utilize funds from the year we're in, take money, I'd say something like reserve. Fund in and have the cancer testing for all the employees this year. Or we can add money into the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget upcoming and do that. I don't care what the desire of the board is. Let me know and me and Karen will figure that out, but uh, uh, there is money in the reserve account. I don't know if the chairman thinks of using money from reserve to do it for this current year that we're in right now, but that is an option you can have and we can put that on the next council agenda if that's the, the will of the board. Or again, you know, the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget doesn't start till after July. So whatever your preference is will work out. I just, I guess I'm looking for some clear direction of what you guys would like to do.
All right, thank you. Uh, Fire Chief, do you have a follow up? Again, just to be clear on the numbers, I know, because I got a little confused. We had five thousand dollars. You already did five employees?
This current year, yes.
All right. So the twenty-six.
Can I, can I just make a comment not to cut you off, uh, Chairman? Um, I don't believe that that program is going to be starting up anytime soon at Harrington. So funding it for this current year probably isn't even feasible to make that happen. I think after July first, uh, the monies should be, could be available. Um, I think at that point, the, the program itself will be up and running again for next year. Next fiscal year.
All right. Mr. Town Manager?
So to that end, Mr. Chairman, we just saved whatever it was, eighty-seven grand in other departments. We can attempt to reallocate some of that money back into, uh, the testing for the permit in the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget, if that's the desire to board. And, and you guys will take it up when we do the budget process for the July twenty twenty-one budget.
Okay. I, I'm just hearing a lot of background noise, but, okay. Go, go ahead, Chief.
Um, just a, another concern in regards to this, I know we're just in the discussion, is that um, I did speak with Karen Harnoys in regards to maybe making this not a fiscal year uh, account that obviously this is going to take some time to do over twenty firefighters over the next, uh, it's probably going to take almost all of next year. So I don't want to come to the end of next year and say, all right, we need to either, uh, get, put more, uh, to do whatever we need to do. I think if we can just continue this as a fun. If that's what Karen wants to do, I thi- I think that may be able to be worked out that way instead of, of, of it in the, in the fiscal budget.
Okay, um. Counselor Katrona, did you have anything? I don't, I don't know if I called on you yet.
Mr. Chairman, I just echo my fellow counselors and fully support this. Thank you.
Okay. Um, go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah. So, so I let Karen Chaim in here too, but you guys remember how we did this special article for roads? We put the money in for the roads, which is a continuous account. It sounds like that's what you're trying to do here uh, for this cancer treating center, a fund that can roll over from year to year is what Paul's describing. So I would ask Karen if she's listening, would we just simply allocate a certain amount of money into an article for the, this, you know, is, is a continuous fund for cancer treatment screening?
Um, I wouldn't really call it a fund. I would call it an account that could go over from year to year. Um, we, we could do it that way and we wouldn't, that way, we wouldn't add it to the fire department budget because it probably shouldn't be.
So it'd be an article.
Karen, uh, I, I think this is probably further discussion. Maybe we can bring it up, uh, Monday when we talk about the free cash allocation. And maybe take a look at, uh, as was set up with the blooded buildings account that, uh, I think has just, well, we have a special appropriation account of like a hundred and eighty thousand and one, another hundred and eighty, another and a hundred and something and another one. Um, perhaps, uh, set it up with a free cash, uh, appropriation. Um, as this, as that, uh, article, like you said. So we can talk about that maybe next week, uh, during the free cash discussion. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'll work with the finance director and we'll talk about options and we'll give you some options for that meeting.
Well, I think if
And then I guess.
I'm sorry, I was, I was going to say if we're going to reallocate, then that would be one thing. Um, that would just be probably from one account to another. We, yeah, we can talk about it.
Talk about it, yeah. Because you did send us a list of accounts that were, you had scheduled to close out, so that could probably be part of that discussion on Monday night, if that sounds agreeable to everybody else. Um, I would just ask, I think Chief, um, if you could, uh, for Monday night, have a, uh, the, the clear-cut number to get everybody, uh, accomplishing your department, including the call members. And then what the plan would be on a, on what the cycle would look like going forward so that it could be planned accordingly into the budget. That, that would be my, uh, request to you, if I could, through the town manager's office, if you could. Okay. Is there any further discussion on this? I think Counsel Steve, uh, Counsel Steve's has said, okay, for the next fiscal year. So we'll bring it back back on Monday night and we'll talk about it a little bit more, uh, firmly on that. If, if anybody else have anything else on this topic? Okay. Thank you, Chiefs. We appreciate it. Uh, this is just a placeholder status of the section six dash two hundred, keeping up pets. That's going to stay on here until we can maybe determine the next course of action when it's just one item, because I have a sense we would have to read that whole bylaw, uh, in public, given the fact that we don't have the ability uh, to really have, uh, public postings anywhere outside. Nobody can go into the town hall right now, go to the town clerk's office or the town manager's office to review it. And, uh, I think we'll just hold off on that. Council's form. I'll start with, uh, Counsel Katrona. Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, possibly to the fire chief. Um, just for clarification, I heard earlier at the beginning of the meeting that, um, we know masks are going to be mandatory. Um, but then we, did we talk about, um, education first, when someone's not wearing it, then finding? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. Uh, Chip, uh, Counsel Katrona, yes, that, that is correct. Um, so basically the premise on the new law is definitely masks should be worn when you can't obtain the six feet, um, distance from one another, uh, in the public. So yes, uh, I do believe that instead of just flat out fining people on the first, uh, first, uh, violation of that. Chief Woodson has been very active in instructing his police officers who are out on the streets uh, to talk to these people that they see out in, in these type of, uh, scenarios where they're all gathered together with no masks. So yes, it's going to be an educational piece. Um, and obviously as we move on, um, these people could possibly be fined at a three hundred dollar fine.
Thank you for the explanation. By now, I would hope everyone knows that masks, um, will be mandatory fairly soon. And, um, uh, I, I, I feel strongly that, uh, uh, fining these people when they are found, um, it is, is a very good alternative. Thank you.
Um, just want to say, if I, if you don't mind, we did have a conversation about this, uh, quite extensively this morning at the emergency operations center with, uh, Chief, um, Chief Woodson. Um, there are, you know, different things that he can do for enforcement. But like anything else, the first thing is you want to do is some kind of education, uh, similar to, you know, you have an issue with speeding, you get out there with a cruiser, you run some radar. This would be, uh, really, um, to say, hey, make sure you're wearing a mask. Now, I, and I don't think we've mentioned this very publicly yet. Um, stores will have the right to refuse, uh, people to come into their establishments if they're not wearing a mask. Because it is, uh, private property. Um, so they control that, that property. Uh, I think the police may have some, uh, overriding issues with just trying to make sure that the stores themselves have backup. Um, that if they decide not to allow people in, that's going to le- leave it to a whole nother realm of, of, uh, enforcement. And, uh, so I, I, I think we have to, as a, as a council, make sure that we push the measures that masks are, are, are needed. But, uh, unless you're really defiant, uh, education personally on a law enforcement end, I always believe that in for, uh, for, first step is education. Um, and then move to that next step. A lot of these people that if they're not wearing masks may not have the funds available or the means to, uh, understand the, the need of the mask. So, uh, it's a balancing act, but I think the chief will take his as he does in everything else in law enforcement. And let's not also say the board of health and the health department um, has a role in this as well because they can enforce it just as much as well. So it's, it's really going to be something that we will discuss on the emergency operations side as well. Um, Counsel, but your point is well taken. Did you have anything else to bring up there, Counsel Katrona?
No, I don't know. Thank you. You, you, you did mention funds available. Someone, you know, put a bandana on, put something, put something on. Uh, again, I just stressed, everyone should be aware by now that masks, uh, should be worn in public. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Anna?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Yeah, May sixth marks the date that masks are mandatory. Thank you for bringing that up again. Counselor Katrona, or face covering. I mean, not everybody, like you said, um, can probably go out by masks. Um, I, I ordered some masks off of Amazon. Um, I was fortunate enough to get my scarf mask that you whipped up over your nose and your mouth. But the other masks that actually go around your ears and cover your mouth and nose, um, those are in like back order until June and July. So, um, whatever you have like a bandana or, you know, or scarf or something, that'll work too. Um, and when you can't six, you know, be six feet with social distance that they require. Um, and when you can't six, you know, be six feet with social distance that they require. Um, and stuff, then yeah, the store, the stores, you're right, Counsel Joe Van, they can, you know, refuse. To have, allow you in the store, I know big why, they have somebody out there with a checklist, you know? Um, because there's not supposed to be more than two hundred people in the store, and they're really doing their diligence with. Like making sure all their carts and everything are all sprayed, um, and disinfected for you. And, um, so yeah, I mean, the sooner we, um, you know, everybody. It's, it's an effort for ver- for everybody, we don't like it. It's like, we feel like our, our freedoms are being restricted. And, yeah, I'm not going to say it's a new model, because I don't believe it, I believe we're going to come out of this, and we'll come out of this stronger. Knowing how to take care of this virus, and potentially knowing how to take care of anything else that comes at us like this. Um, hopefully we'll be better prepared, I just want to say yesterday was such a gorgeous day. And, um, if you can get outside and safely social distance, I suggest you do so on those, those nice days. I think it's really important that we get outside and enjoy the sunshine and the, the nice weather, because we're all cooped up in our house. And, um, and that's it, thank you, stay safe.
Alright, Counsel Nash, thank you, Counsel Mina, Counsel Nash?
Uh, thank you, Chairman, through you, uh, just really briefly, I, uh, appreciate all the sentiments regarding. Uh, the governor's order, I, I for one, uh, try to practice these things, I know our last meeting. People were complimentary, but quite frankly, I'm going to go out on a limb here, I'm pretty observant, I don't see people wearing masks in the grocery stores. Uh, as often as maybe some of you have, and I have to go to the store at least once or twice a week, so. Um, with that, I hope we all take our own precautions and do what we need to do. Uh, we can beat that dead horse as long as we want to, but I want to step back for a moment and, um. Send birthday wishes to Chief Norman, and I don't know if I did it personally, uh, on Facebook or what have you, but. That guy's a, a pretty interesting individual that I respect immensely, and I just want to thank him and. Deputy Chief for their contributions to the town through the fire department, but I look at Paul Norman, and for one other reason. He runs two, three, four, five, six miles every morning, and he was my role model when I was trying to get healthy, so keep it up, Paul. Um, I also want to, uh, just, actually, I want to shut up, we have a meeting on Thursday, we have other topics. So I'll reach out to individuals, uh, on the council for some of the things I'd like to discuss, that's all for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Marketti?
Yes, I, I'd like to, uh, update on the upcoming election, I know that. Uh, Maddie sent out a notice that they're going to have mail-in voting, but is she still planning on having? Um, early voting at the town hall, and how's that going to work, and is she still planning on having? One polling place on June ninth, uh, I just like an, an update like on that, if I could, please?
So, Counsel Marketti, I, I do know that I got a copy of an email that, uh, she had sent off to the legal council. Asking those questions about making sure that we do everything legally. I, I know as of today, she had not gotten a response, and she sent a follow-up email, I don't know if the town manager has something else to, uh, add, but I do know she is working. On those questions, and perhaps we can have an update for later in the week, but, uh, Mr. Tom, Andrew?
Yeah, I, I do know, Counsel Marketti, that she's still having the election at the community center. I actually met with her today, because I had, I reached out and I went over to the senior center today, community center, and talked to the director. About the election, and, and, you know, there's some issues that I think Maddie has to plan out, uh. Being is it absolutely, uh, for those days, for that day is going to be open to the public? So we're going to want to, we're going to be using shields in front of all the workers and stuff, and all these citizens who come are going to be required to wear masks. In their line, in the, in the line as they're waiting, but also, I, you know, I, I said to her, you need to work with Heather. And see if we need to mark out something on the ground, you know, every six feet to, to help with the social distancing. Maybe get some signs up for the election about the social distancing. Uh, so there's some work that I, I think that Maddie needs to do in terms of the planning of how that day is going to go. Not only to protect the workers, but to, to make sure citizens are following the social distancing standards, and then we're going to have to look at. Uh, we've been keeping that building pretty clean, hasn't been anybody in it except for the staff. You know, working hard to keep it cleaning, but if we're going to allow that many citizens going there, we're going to have to desanitize that building, uh, once the election is done as well, so. Um, I've asked her to meet with Pat to go through it and sit down and develop a plan, and involve Heather Blakely. Uh, in that plan as well, so we can make sure that it's, the, the election itself goes off as safely as possible. I'm not sure, I don't believe there's going to be any early voting at town hall, I think any early voting is going to have to be done by mail. We're not letting anybody out of the town hall, so, uh, while I haven't talked specifically with Maddie on that, I, I, it's just not going to happen. Uh, the Health Department is ordering a couple of thousand masks, the hospital, Harrington Hospital is working with them. To get a couple of thousand masks so that we have them, we can't supply, and we don't intend to supply masks for everybody who is in the voting line. But if somebody forgets a mask, you can't turn them away from voting, we need to, it's a democracy, you gotta let them vote, so. Uh, we'll work with citizens if, for some reason, they don't have a mask. One, one of the other problems that I think is, is, I'm not sure that, uh, there's a lot of masks out in the public to buy, I'm not sure. I, I haven't had to go out and shop for masks, you know, a lot of people are making their homemade thing, or putting facial covers on. But I'm not sure there's a, a ton of masks out there, I know the town itself is fighting hard to get masks for itself, it's not an easy thing to do. So we are going to have to be a little bit, working with citizens to help them locate masks as well to the general public, well, that's as much as I know about it this time.
If I could just follow up, um, there's also the issue of, you know, I'm, I'm sure you're thinking about all this, but I just thought I would. Mention it, you know, everybody's going to be marking those ballots with pens, and everybody's using the same pen, so. Like I said, I'm sure that you are thinking about all this, I just thought I would ask about it.
And, and Counsel Marketti, that's exactly the kind of issues I asked Maddie to look at with Pat, so they've got to come up with a plan, and I had asked her about that today. And they clearly had some ideas, but there wasn't a developed plan, so she's going to be working with. Pat and Heather to, to develop that plan before the election, to be sure we're ready.
And I'd just like to say to all the residents and Tom, please, uh, stay safe, and, and to all the councils as well, uh, stay safe and healthy, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, uh, Maddie has, uh, issued me, uh, um. Sent me a couple messages just now, first off, Maddie, I guess you are watching, so happy birthday to you, because it is your birthday today, I believe. So I wish you a happy birthday, even though you're not participating in this meeting directly. Um, so, uh, she has indicated there's no early voting in person, it'll only be by mail. She brought pencils to give to voters, everyone will. Uh, dry their own pencil, so I guess, uh, everybody will have their own pencil to vote, so she is working on those issues. And, uh, I hopefully, uh, she will get, okay, their own pencil, so everybody will get their own pencil. Uh, so I think what we'll do is, uh, I'll make sure that, uh, maybe for the May eighteenth meeting, I will put her on the agenda. She can update the town, uh, at the council meeting as to what the plans are for, for the, uh, for the election, I think that, that will, uh, work out. So that we all are on the same page, and perhaps we'll have some additional answers, so, uh. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, um, so I just want to reiterate the, and I've said it a million times already, but, uh, besides the masks. There's face coverings and, and that being used in the light, utilizing a shirt or anything else like that. Uh, trying to find masks or anything like that, it's going to be quite hard to come by when we, we do struggle to try to find and, and acquire. Um, such masks, but, um, there's a lot of people out there making them as well, but. Um, I do want to thank Opakum for putting, I have not gone out there since they put the bushes in, but I want to thank them for the other day and put the trees in. And working hard, there, there was four or five of them, and again, I will reiterate why I was out there. And before, when I drove up there, already social, uh, distancing, so, um. I am the one who submitted pictures and put them on social media, um, and the, I would say ninety-nine percent of. The people were appreciative, and they made kind words of being safe, unlike the one percent. Um, also, I want to, to the town manager, what I, I've noticed the last few days is the town council has. Uh, the council has the videos up and the recordings, the other day when I checked, um, the curbside advisory committee. Recording was up as well, I checked on Friday, and curbside was down, border health has been down. Uh, PPP, DPW, and the planning board recordings are down. Now, maybe me and my lack of understanding of technology, but when I, I can pull up the town council one. And I can pull up the P and D and the general gov budget ones, for some reason, I cannot pull up the ones that, uh. Have gone off from April fifteenth, I believe, and, uh, to present. So I asked that Will or somebody, or, you know, Mr. Town Manager, if you guys can take a look at that and make sure they're up, uh, properly. And I, I think Counsel Katrona brought this up last time, I wondered if we can somehow or another with these subcommittee meetings and these curbside. The curbside, if somehow or another, if we can be able to get, um, resident participation if possible. Um, and maybe I'm wrong, and the chair can, can, uh, let me know that if I'm wrong on that one. But I thought that was something that we can possibly do, if we can get these up, why can't we get the subcommittees and the, uh. Curbside and the smaller, the planning board meeting as well, so, and I may be wrong on what Counsel Katrona had mentioned last time, but, uh. I'd like the town manager to take a look at that, and, um. To, to the chair, real quick question, you, you mentioned earlier, I had some lag time, when did you say the budget? Uh, was going to be in the paper, or the, the notification was going to be in the paper for the budget? I see, I know you said the twenty-eighth would be the meeting, but.
Yeah, so we had to go back to, uh, see. Apologize, I'm just looking at the calendar here, so it would have to go in the paper for the fourteenth. After two weeks to have the meeting on the twenty-eighth, so our last budget meeting with capital and, uh. The capital and the free cash allocations is on the eleventh, they would have to be prepared, the town manager's office will have to prepare it. To make sure that it's all available to be printed into paper, it has to go into the paper by, has to get to, uh, to them by that date. So that it can be uploaded, so that we can have two weeks of, in, in the Southbridge News.
So my, my other question, I think we learned last year, is fourteen business days, or is it fourteen, just two weeks?
Says two weeks, oh, it says two weeks, so we're looking at, so if it goes into that paper on the fourteenth. Um, then that gives us the two weeks to the twenty eighth.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all.
Counsel Marketti?
I, I just wanted to say something that, because the Southbriar News only prints once a week, if you hand it in on the fourteenth. It's not going to go in till the following week, a week later.
Well, that, that's why, that's why it's going into the fourteenth, and it's two weeks, so it's going to the twenty eighth. So it goes in on the fourteenth, the meeting is on this way.
You'd have to hand it in on the eleventh, I believe. If you want to get it into.
No, she had. Uh, Yvonne has checked the dates on that, so as long as there's a certain time, Yvonne and Kim had checked the dates, and that's what they had told me they would have time to get it in. For the two weeks before the meeting.
Alright, thank you.
So, and that's, that was what we were up against, because of that, they had not taken into account the two weeks. Um, and I think that's something when we talk about the charter, uh, review, when we get that underway, um, that. Uh, to clarify now, we have a, a, a lot of mediums that you can use to get information out, so. Circulated local publication, so we could determine on if we're going to, uh, do that, but that, that, that's what we're up against, so. Alright, uh, I'm going to go to Counsel Steve's here, he has a couple things, a couple items. Number one, May is wetlands month, so it takes some time to explore our wild spaces. Getting some cleaner air and making sure our brooks, trails, and other areas are healthy, they keep us alive. Number two. Do we have a contact numbers for the Community Tracing Collaborative for COVID nineteen in town? I know they're working, but people know, you know, what numbers to watch for the, for, so they answer the calls. Many people ignore numbers, so they don't recognize, and all I know is that they have two unusual prefixes, eight, five, seven, and eight, three, three. So I guess I will refer that to, uh, I don't know if the instant commander Norman knows this, or will refer that. Uh, you know what, well, I'll take that information, I'll ask that question, uh, of the E O C, and we'll get back to Counsel Steve's on that, because we'll have to take a look at that, because I'm not. I know that we have, uh, the, the hea- Health Department had hired two nurses, but I don't know what numbers they're using for that tracing. Um, so we have, uh, we'll have to take a look at that, and we'll get that back to you. Um, okay, uh. Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, um, I just want to say that, uh, to the townsfolk. That, uh, there are a lot of meetings that have been passing by recently, and there's a lot more coming up as we finish the month of May and the budget season. And that the, uh, the town website is actually a very good resource. You have the latest updates on the, uh, on the COVID information that you need. I know the town clerk has been, uh, very good about posting notices there as well regarding various, uh, needs that, uh, the town clerk has. And, um, all the meetings that are scheduled are published there, you can find out when they're going to be, what days, and what times. And, um, I just remind people that the, the website, the town website is really a very good resource and something you should make use of. That's all of that, uh, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the town council is Monday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty at seven P M. And it will be a remote meeting.
Thank you, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Mina, second by Counsel Daniel, roll call?
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Mina?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Uh, Counsel Nash's computer, uh, died on him, he had sent me a message, so he's no longer online, so you can excuse him from this vote.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Steve's is a yes.
Okay, you have adjourned, thank you, I'm having a minute.